I will be guilty of, well, assuming that we are going to hire a consultant. And I'm sure if we do go in that direction, they're experienced, they're knowledgeable. It's not like the committee, the search committee, it's going to be working in a vacuum, stretching the potential, it'll all have professional help. They will then, with the consultant's assistance and direction, they'll look through resumes, correct?
Uh huh.
And narrow that down. Again, it's all going to be done with the board's consent. It's going to be set up as a committee, functionally a subcommittee of this board. Things will be done openly as suggested by KP Law and as required by law. They will then, some example, but go through the resumes, narrow it down, and ultimately then do interviews, correct?
Right.
The interviews will be public.
Well, no.
Or not.
No, they're not, no. Because at this point, since you're probably going to get about thirty resumes in, and then they're going to call through, get some number to interview, unless someone is going to make the top three, and there's a real chance they might get the job.
Okay.
They're already working someplace else, and they don't want publicly known that they're searching. So those are done in the executive session.
Actually, I skipped a step. There will be that, the search committee will do a development interview question, so on analogy to what we did with the interim. Then this is first round of interviews in executive session, if the requirements are purpose eight, which I don't have in my hand, of the open meeting law armadillo. Let's leave it at, certainly, they will be conducted in conformance with the open meeting law requirements. And then there'll be a determination of finalists, and at which point, there will be final interviews to the appointment body, which is us, correct?
Those are public, when it is at the finalists.
There's no limit on the number of times a particular candidate may be interviewed in open session. Executive session may only be used for strategy with respect to negotiations, et cetera. So we will, I'm sure, be using this as our figurative lead bible, not to do any tricks and stuff.
One question on this, and I'm going by my experience in doing this with the school district. What we would do there is first vote on the candidate we wanted, and that was all public and everything, and then we would sit down, usually with just a representative of the school committee, and negotiate the salary at that time. So you first pick, then you negotiate.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the same.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. And that is obviously private until, this is private.
Mm-hmm.
Until an agreement.
So I've spent...
So the process is, and you've got the number of people, and out of the number of people, you pick one, and then do this negotiation. Well, I'm not saying how many, three, four, whatever, but here and there, you have this group, and you're doing the interviews, and you pick one, and then, yes.
The finalists.
Please?
From the finalists, you pick one.
You pick one.
The finalists are picked from a larger group of applicants.
Right, right.
And then you pick one.
And then you do the negotiation, and if something happens and the negotiation doesn't work out.
Right.
Then you can go back to the other finalists, or whatever, anything is open at that point. Typically, you would go back to the other finalist. Or if something happens to the first one, as you've had experience with it, and even our case, the last time we went for a police chief, the finalist, what we picked, decided not to take it, and so we went down to the next one.
But, so as I think you're referring to, having failed recently at Masco, failure recently, some representative, if I recall, the whole process ended up, did not end up with something acceptable, and you kind of reopen to something.
Right, the person we accepted chose to, for very valid reasons, at the unfortunate very last minute, little bit the afternoon before they were going to be announced, we were going to have the official thing, but it was pretty clear which direction was going to go, and I think he was unable to accept it. And so, the committee decided not to go to number two, because the gap in our perception, collectively, our collective perception, was the gap between number one and two or three was so great, that we preferred to reopen the process and go back to square run. That's why we hired Tommy Bent as the interim for a year, and ended up getting Daryl. But those things, I think, will become a pattern and unfold if and when the situation comes up, but applicants are going to be very familiar with this position, and this is not something we're going down. We go down the road less frequently than the applicants do many times.
So I have given a great amount of time and consideration of the profile of people that I think would serve the town well in this screening committee. We've gotten some input around the limited amount of participation from the board of selectmen, that probably makes sense around the fact that it might not be a bad idea to have someone from the FinCon, might not be a bad idea to have a full-time town employee, and that it's clearly would be a good idea not to have everyone be someone that's serving on a board, but rather try to reach out to some different components. So I have for your consideration a proposed slate for, again, the screening committee we do to hire.
What's the number of those?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
One of my greatest considerations was for who might have the capabilities to be a chair. And again, I wanted to make it clear it was our subcommittee, not, you know, not the planning board chair to do it, or the FinCon chair, or so forth. And I was also trying to blend some people who haven't been the same people that's been on every committee we've ever had in history at the time. So the challenge was in that, finding someone who, on the one hand, it would be process-oriented and open-minded, but on the other hand, and not sitting currently on a board, not that that's absolute, but that was my preference, but at the same hand, knew how to, you've got to know about open meeting laws, you've got to know about public regulations, you have to know how to move a question, that kind of thing. So I thought immediately of Katrina Frayer, who was the elementary school chair, but I know, and obviously, everybody knows, I spent a lot of time working with the schools through the last budget, with the hope, and I hope it did come out with something relatively reasonable in terms of the budget request, and was personally impressed by how, it was her first year as a chair, which might be the reason that she's no longer in school. But, and she didn't step down, and I talked to her about that, because I felt that so much time was invested in working together and whatnot, and looking further than I should have, became apparent that, you know, she had, her personal situation with her family and employment and whatnot led her to it, but I felt that she, this is totally personal, little kid joke, there was some sadness in it, if that's what I remember, that she kind of wished she could hang around more, you know. So I gave her a call, and she did think about it for a day, but then she was very positive, as were all these people, by the way, very positive in their willingness to put in the time, you know, which I thought was a great statement to the effort of this board as a whole, and the importance of the talent of people. So let me go through it. So that's Katrina, she was not currently on any board, she's a former chair. And I think, notwithstanding how accordingly complicated this is, compared to getting through last year's elementary school budget, I think she'll be just fine. The second, a selection, selection needs no introduction, I have to call him sir now, but which is my, sir.
Sir Boyd.
Sir Boyd. And, you know, you won't have the burden of being the chair and running the meetings. I don't know about you. Being one of the couple of people I know who knows everybody in town, I thought that you might be able to help us move along. Jay Alwalle, you might know, this is a FinCon person, he's really, again, in my humble opinion, really moved up in the ranks of seniority and experience in the, in the, in the FinCon. He's a very, to say, he's a very bright guy is an understatement.
Very insightful.
Yeah, he's, I was really happy.
And with the business orientation that he selectively uses as a filter and a lens for how he looks at things like this, which is important.
I don't know if technically the words financial analyst are the right words, but it's something like that, that he does very well.
Yeah, no, exactly, he's very knowledgeable.
Beth Willis is our town clerk, who was suggested to be a good person. I think, do honest quotes, were something like, "I do everything, give Beth a chance." Al Wallace brings in expertise in, he's done a lot of personnel-related things.
Plus, he knows the tone of the town.
Oh, yeah.
As well as...
Oh, he's also, he is the chair of all the friends of the town hall, if it's not a town, but he's still. Sarah Guido, in the full disclosure mode, is the wife of John Guido, the summer chair of the FinCon, I acknowledge that. Sarah, being, what was that little college she went to in Cambridge, or Harvard, or something, she's one of the many extremely intelligent and skilled people that help us off from time to time. She was instrumental in assisting Kelly and others in the financial policies and development and whatnot. And, you know, obviously, I don't know the details of why she doesn't, been recruited as a full-time committee member of this or that, wouldn't be surprised if she doesn't.
Lifelong resident, too, isn't she?
Lifelong, yeah, she grew up in town.
Yeah, and I think that's valuable.
Her family.
And again, I got very positive reaction from everybody, people were, didn't want to know that, as important as it was, that I was time-limited, that there were no lifetime contracts. And finally, Jim McDougall, how do I, what's his resume? He's been, well, he's related to the Nutter family in town.
He's a brother-in-law of Ben Nutter, has been very involved in Essex County Greenbelt.
Serving projects that have been...
He was involved in the mapping, GIS mapping program for Thompson.
He does lean in the mapping, and yet, but, and again, I don't actually know if he, if he grew up in Thompson, but he certainly is a part of one of the longstanding and most well-respected community families. So I'm very, very happy with the quality and talent of the people, and their enthusiasm, and would entertain the motion to form this, what is KP Law called, this search committee slash preliminary screening committee, serving as a subcommittee, if you want to put that there, off the board of selectmen, with the attached slate including Katrina serving as the chair.
Awesome.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I do notice that your points are taken, that you want somebody who has experience, perhaps, in the case of the chair, with open meeting laws and all the kinds of rules like that. But essentially, all of these are folks that have been very much involved with some part of the government, as you pointed out. It would, it would seem delightful, perhaps, somebody that perhaps was just a part of the community, that just had some, a lot of experience in business, or something of that nature, to add a different flavor in it. I guess this has all been worked out, but I'm disappointed that we don't have at least one person that is outside the normal scope of people that get selected for these things. I think it would feel better to the community over the long run, if we did at least have one such person, but this place has been offered, so that's my comment.
Any further discussion? Willis in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Most, I forgot your names, thank you all for your cooperation. And, Dan, I'm happy to help if you don't have an email for every one of these people, but could you put together an email, listen, let me know if you need help in doing that?
Jim's the only one I don't know. The last one is the only one I don't know.
Jim? Okay, we'll get, I'll get to it.
I think I brought them together on my phone right here, so.
Just notifying them that, thanking them that they have been appointed, and that will be in town.
I don't know if it's helpful at all, or if you've discussed it with them, but the search, folks at the search committee have told me, as far as a time commitment for these folks, they would estimate it's about three meetings. It's not extensive. There's a meeting upfront to meet with them, explain the processes, then the search consultant goes off and puts together these packets with us, does the advertising, et cetera. Then these folks come back after the screening, the search consultant has narrowed down and gotten rid of any resumes that truly don't fit the requirements that we have, and they pass off to them, and a second meeting to review the resumes, and then a third, which is kind of a day-long with the interviews. So it could be three or four, but it's not a weekly, which is attractive to people.
And there is homework going through the resumes carefully. I don't know any of those individuals who would take that seriously.
Right, but that's great that it's offline, because you don't have the scheduling issue with everyone having to come together, they can look at them offline, get their pawns.
Are site visits ever considered worthwhile or not?
To where they use their work?
Get to your finalists.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, good, yeah, sometimes.
That seemed to be that.
Meeting in hand.
Totally turned choices that, the district, school district, so.
So that's not inconsistent, I think, I've told them, I don't, I think that's initial I wrote, but you know what, we might want to say that, we'll be in touch as soon as a consultant is selected.
Done early on.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll be able to do them in the twenty-second.
Do that in twenty-second, keep this thing going.
And look, we're talking about consultants. How many resumes do you expect them to get? I heard thirty at one point. That thirty includes some that would be screened out, because they don't apply at all.
Right, and they weren't able to give me an exact number of what would go down, but you know, anywhere from...
So half, you'd say?
More than half.
Twenty, twenty?
Yeah, maybe twenty.
Okay, we give the amount that they would be working.
Right, and then they narrow that down to about three or so that comes into the board.
That's what the demand is, I mean, sometimes you get lots of applicants, some of them...
I think that's what we could talk about, too. In the past, for example, for the police and for town administrator first time, I think we asked for three to five, left it up somewhat to the search committee. Maybe it was four to five for Jenna, but for the police, maybe three to five, I can't remember, but I think there's something to be said for leaving some discretion to this committee, if they see that, you know, they're so close together, a bunch of them, it's hard to decide to have more than, than less. But I would say that three is clearly a minimum, and I would certainly feel better with four. I don't think we've ever really gone with less than. Maybe not, no, no, we've got that, I remember Jenna, there were only three that came up for the interviews. We had five for the police, and we got four for the next town administrator. So I would say three is clearly, clearly, you know, and it's safer to have the four, I think, because then you can make some discretion. So my suggestion is, though, that you would go out to the committee with a request for three to five as the number that the committee would come back with.
Well, I think three is typically what they come forward with, because a lot of people who are in the process don't feel, want to feel like they're being shot out there, if, you know. They're really putting their names out publicly, so that's an issue. And you're going to get a recruiter who will really do outreach to try to match people up with the community. In other words, you could have the best person out there, but it may not be a good match for Thompson. I think that's the other thing, is that the people that come to you, you want to make sure that they're going, they're matches, they're not either underqualified or overqualified.
Sometimes you're frightened, or I picture as a cliff, you know, where like you have a group of, let's say it's, let's say you ask for four, you have a group of three that are in the same neighborhood in terms of qualification, and then the next group just drop it out.
That's one of three or five, in my mind.
But, but I think, I think this committee would probably look at reasonably trying to find three to get to this board, and that would be reasonable, but it may be only two, you know, depending upon the two of us.
Yeah, it can happen.
The search consultant would need that decision, guiding appropriate.
The next item is goals and objectives. So this is kind of different layers seems to be the word, I don't know if you're thinking today, going to be, the first layer is just, I thought it was timely to look at what our official goals were from last year, and yet, we can just get to started today, we don't want to say I do the whole process, but to take last year's official list, is this, is this the, is this the right document?
That's the one that had the...
But, but this section of it, these are the official ones of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, so this would be the, if everybody doesn't have this, is this on BUDA?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be the one that we're working from. So that, with that, step one is seeing where we stand on these, seeing where we want to do, what we want to have the twenty, so it would be fiscal 2020, right? What will become our fiscal 2020 goals. The second thing is, I hope that we're going to stay with this leadership concept, we've gone away from having official liaisons, but I think it's working pretty well. And so, I mean, it can be different people or confirmation or whatever, but I like the idea of having at least one of us, if I like the better word, responsible, or leading the efforts, or the contact, or any of that type of thing. Then, at some point, we want to work from that to give some guidance to Robin in terms of what we see as prioritization of her time beyond her day-to-day management and leadership of the town hall, and the daily responses to citizen, citizen. But, do okay? So it's up to you, folks, in terms of how much as you want to do today, I wanted to at least lay that out and give people time, we can talk a little now, we can talk a lot now, or we can just bring it back to our next work session, when people have had time to look at what was achieved. Again, I think the later one is, the starting one is on the board level, what our goals and objectives should be for the next year. But just the other one, I guess, also stating the obvious, to some degree, we learned this last year, because it was a component of Kelly's contract, that we added to this to meet some of our obligations in the contract, or at least for the time being, that's no longer the case, but...
We still want the goals.
And I think this is good timing, because what we're going to focus on, consider priorities, are going to be included in who we're trying to find for permanent town administrator, depending on where our focus is going to be, and the skill sets that we need.
Yeah, if they know where we're headed, that'll help them understand our priorities. Yeah, I think, I think one of the things we probably should do is, any end of this today, Mark, or another time, but go, go through each of these, just kind of check in where it's at. You know, I have the ones that I think are most, I think we did a darn good job last year with these nine, but I also think that there may be some adjustments on those that are necessary, and I don't know if there are completely new ones or not, I thought about that, I had a couple of them, usually I'll pull something out of the air, but I did.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Anywhere.
I don't think it's necessarily bad.
No, I think, I think we did a really good job last year, is my conclusion.
And some of them might not necessarily be on ours, but they definitely need to be on the town administrator, and identifying those as priorities. Like, we've talked in the past, and Kelly had warned us about starting to get onto the whole issue of the negotiation of the Verizon podcast, and then Robin highlighted that, where that might not be ours specifically, it's definitely something that should be addressed by the town administrator. So I had a number of items as subsets here, that may be ours, may be town administrator. But I think, I like your idea of going through and seeing basically where we are on these. If we're only a quarter through, then they need to stay on, move on continuity to finish up some of these items. Some will come off, and some will be modified, and some of them are kind of general, and now we can drill down and feel a little more easier.
One of the things I feel very strongly about is that these are town goals, and in some cases, selectmen individually or in combination, are kind of taking the primary name and going for it. In some cases, it's been coordinated with the FinCon, for instance, in some cases, it's been the town administrator. So the town administrator goals are going to reflect a lot of these, but to different degrees. And of course, one of the things, I think, we talk about TA contractors, and that's something different last year. This will be an opportunity for us to take a close look at how we set up a better performance review process that's fairer to somebody coming in, more transparent, and allows us to have better conversations with an individual as we're going into things, before things get to.
Couple of, Dan, can you be, I do, I mean, saying, be the official caretaker of the revised versions as we were just, so a couple of little things, so obviously, the topic is going to be 2020.
Yep.
There's an, I think, there's an E missing in forecasting, I don't know if you can read it?
You have a different version, one I have.
I'm looking at the one that's on board docs.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, all right.
Sure.
Well, we have an E in forecasting, so 2020, and don't mean it's any disrespect or anything, it says KH, KH should be removed.
Yep.
2021 town budget.
Yep.
And policies can come up.
Okay.
Number two is gone, because we completed that.
Yeah.
Town administrator, irate hiring, or some, or selection, or something like that, instead of contract.
Yeah, I would put, yeah, and the other piece I'd like to put on that is, and goal-setting or initiating that process for talking about the specifics of what we want that individual to do, and how we're going to work collaboratively to see, and if you're getting down, or if there are hurdles and obstacles that we learn about in the early stages. I'd like that to be something that helps town administrator do a better job, because it's a foundation for...
So can you put a B in the air, and attempt to summarize all that by saying, goals set, TA goals set?
Goals set. I couldn't say it.
I put together some things, too.
Okay, let me just run through these little tiny things, sorry, I don't... So we got rid of the KH, on the, so now, given the formation of that committee, BJ should be put under, and then, I don't think it's first, but next to me, in town administrator, hiring, right? We get the right people, do we still considering what part of the downtown, or is...
No.
So the BJ should, so they can move over, and then you can have your own blocks there, and the BJ can come out? We have Dick on, signed by, that's great. On the listing, oh, John Spencer, that's, this is much improved. Can we add, please, you're on number six in other areas, highways and roads, and if there's no objection, put Mr. Jackson's initials on there, you're doing a lot of things with copper mine and all that.
Yeah.
I have one thing, I did miss it, we want to pass it, on the town technology systems. A review of the systems in terms of their functionality is one thing, technology plan for improvement and consolidation is another thing, a very important C is reviewing security. I was just reading in a trade paper last week, that they're expecting the number of ransomware attacks on small, middling municipalities, public schools, things like that, to more than double this coming year. And even if they just hassle us to death, it ain't worth it.
That whole area needs to change now, because it's...
Could update the plan you have.
Yeah, because we actually completed seven the way it is now. So the review is completed, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, this came out a couple of weeks ago, and we just didn't get to it on the agenda, we had down there the goals to discuss, so this was given to you already. So this is a compilation from every department, so we sent out a survey to find out from them, what are you using for software, for hardware, what are your existing problems, what do you think the opportunities are, et cetera. So in this, you'll see there's an executive summary, and then we break down all the findings and recommendations for five different areas, one of them being security. So John had participated in the security area here, so the recommendations are incorporated in here, and then there's an action plan that shows you over five years, when we think each of these things should be accomplished. So there's some really low-hanging fruit that would be done in the first year, and there's some planning that needs to start in the first year for things that are coming subsequent down the road.
And that should be in our goals.
And they should be, and Robin and I were talking about that a little bit, and saying, you know, there's a number of things that she's finding that are hanging chads, so to speak, within our operation. And so, we don't want to just start throwing, you know, everything at the wall to see what sticks here, we should really find tune what we're going to focus on. And so, for number seven in the technology, we should look through here and see, what are the things that we think are most important to do in year one, either because they're low cost, or they're quick to do, or we need to assess them a little bit for town meeting the following spring, to put those monies in there.
More critical need, discuss what critical needs are.
Right, and as I mentioned, security is one of those components, so we should have a technology section here to look at and determine what we... So we should have a technology section here to look at and determine what we think is most critical out of this to move forward with, so.
So something to the effect of establish a technology plan for the next three years or something?
Yeah, because we
Well, that's a five-year right there.
This is a five-year plan right here, but it's, it's still a higher level because you'd have to do a cost assessment, you know, cost benefit, you know, and dig down deeper, so it's a higher level. So yes, it's still identifying what pieces of this are necessary for year one, two.
That's the goal, is to start our
Yeah, and then to start to actually implement, because that's
So one goal could be to, over this year, to go through and develop the full plan. And also underneath that, we see the whatever key pieces that need to be done now because they are necessary, make sense.
And in preparation for funding.
And in preparation for funding.
For the town meeting.
But I think that under town technology systems, we should put the development, I think this is a spectacular document, I'm very impressed with that. And, but put it into a little bit more of the plan form. Kind of look it over, does it make sense? Because a lot of things you can do this, you can do that, there, think about order, and so on. And Robin, you may have some experience with having looked at these things.
Well, I haven't seen this, this plan yet.
Yeah, I'll be interested in your thoughts on that.
And the other, not wrinkle, but the other component of this is that we got the grant, the $80,000 grant to conduct the feasibility with six other towns to see whether we can have a regionalized tech support organization.
There's a town goal.
And that's, and they're two, then, yeah. So this actually would be the input, this would be our input to that analysis, which is already conducted, so they don't have to go back to all of our departments again and ask them the same questions, is that?
And so who is that?
I didn't mean to draw
I just want to ask about going back to number five, and rather than making it the town administrator contract, just identify some key personnel issues that we talked about, because you've got a police chief retiring, and we had a brief discussion about what that replacement should be. And also you have several retirements in cemetery, EPW. Any discussion about consolidation in there?
So, because the GRC is coming out with their recommendation also.
So my, my sense is, it's not just the town administrator, but you have some bigger personnel issues going on here, and I would just ask that, for the, either for myself, or for yourselves, or for the town, the permanent town administrator, to identify that as a priority. And the discussion I had earlier was, do you want to recruit for a police chief or just promote from within? You know, if you promote from within, that's simple. If you recruit, then you have a process to go through, and that has to be timely. And also timely process for the CBAs, collective bargaining. Because, so you have a lot of things happening
Those should be teed up here, yeah, these should, those should be in this.
So absolutely, good point, and important, but it doesn't, just, it needs to be separate, though, we need to make a whole, I need this to say town administrator, hiring or something, and remain as separate.
Right, but you need something, and then about personnel.
On that level.
And then the other personnel pieces.
Personnel, possible restructuring.
And I think that makes sense too, because typically what has happened here, and I think has worked well by and large, is that you assign an individual to track that, and it gives you a point of contact. And kind of that's where supposedly all the information can be, can be found. And it may not be the same for every personnel piece, so by making them separate.
Yeah, can we in the next draft, no, we'll do it, we'll look at it, but just for my draft, in the next draft, so we'll leave the town administrator, and then have one that's personnel and possible restructuring or something, and then one collective hiring.
And I'd like to make a pitch for the cable, for a, at least an ad hoc cable TV advisory committee to start the process, because you go through an ascertainment process which involves members of the community, and, you know, the cable companies will work with you on it, but we've already got the letters from DTE on that, and it's, it's just a bunch of hoo-ha, where you put it out there and you survey people, but somebody needs to be in charge of it. And I would suggest probably assigning Donna to that, since it is a contract, and coordinating with, asking citizens to get involved. Some people are really interested in that, but cable television is phasing out, and, you know, you probably get the most of seven-year contracts. That's what we intend to be, which is
Internet period for long.
Right, you know, they're not making, they're not investing in technology or any of that the way they used to.
And you're interested also in going out and doing the surveys in preparation for this?
It's a requirement, you do an ascertainment, and actually both Horizon and, and the attorney that you should hire is Bill Hewing. He used to work with KP Law, but I'm not sure he does now, but he's the one that everybody uses, because he's got it down pat. And he'll guide your committee.
Including sending out a survey to the
Telling them that they're actually working with Horizon. It's, it's not the way it used to be like 10 or 15 years ago, where you go for the money. But it's something to be aware of and undertake, and the town administrator could just sort of oversee it, but really it is, you're the licensing authority. So, follow me.
Time frame to have that committee formed, Robin?
I would say if you can get it formed in the latter part of this calendar year. Just ask for volunteers. And, and I can contact Bill Hewing, he, he does it, and he does it when he sleeps. And it's, to me, it's very tedious for
So if someone has any personal parameters, why don't we all look at this on a really detailed level for our next, kind of our next work session? Suggested changes, and if anybody has additions, John thinks we have one. I mean, if anybody has, I think we did kind of a priority, didn't we?
No, we didn't prioritize.
Okay, and we didn't, no, that's right.
Yeah.
What I would appreciate, which would help a lot, is we've already made some suggestions. I would prefer to reflect on the adjusted, updated, edited version, take, you know, with town financial policy, that that's gone. Just so that we can kind of be thinking from what this short conversation has already led us to realize what you've offered, and so on. And then, yeah, I think coming in with some thoughts and details on that would be very, very helpful.
Can I throw out a couple of things, just for you guys to be thinking about and see what you think? One, Kelly had started to talk about with Mark and myself, and then we didn't really take it anywhere, and then Robin mentioned it again, and the thing she's coming across, the bylaws.
Yeah, good point.
Our, our bylaws are, you know, kind of disconnected, some have conflicts, because things have been added a piece at a time. Some things have to be reconciled with new state laws that have come out. Not everything is up on the web and, and, you know, for you to find. And General Code, who does, who, we got the lease for Laserfish through them, they do that kind of thing. You give them your bylaws, and they go through, and they scrub, and they find inconsistencies, and they check the state laws.
I, I think we hired them to do it.
We did, and then we didn't pay them, and everything stopped.
Oh, we didn't pay them?
No, we didn't, we didn't have the money. Kelly said it was used for something else.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So it stopped, and Robin was trying to figure out exactly what it was.
Yeah, because what I've observed, just in my brief time here, are there are a lot of things that started and stopped, started and stopped. So I, I'm trying to learn more about this Laserfish project, but then I get an email from General Code, say, saying we have a phased project for the recodification of the town's code and process. Phase, phase one was completed when we provided Ann Gill with the A to E on eight, 10, 15. Four years later, it says we can't start phase two of the project until we have their answers. So I don't even know that we responded, and I don't even know about A2, but I will tell you
What the questions are.
When I went on to look at the zoning bylaws, there is nothing, there's like only one non-criminal disposition bylaw listed in the bylaws, and that's for Board of Health, and I know you have more than that. And that said to me, it, it's not right, whatever's online.
One of the significant number of compositions I've had this week with KP Law, and one of the attorneys was pulling out a bylaw and referenced it, I think it was Dick Jenkins, and he said, well, I just looked at the website at your bylaw, but I know that's been revised. It happens to know that it was wrong, it's like, you know.
The other one is personnel rules and regulations. They said we provided Kelly with a draft on 2/24/17, and I've been waiting for a response to the draft ever since. So I see a lot of incomplete items that I think that if these are done, they can, there'll be links on the website which will enhance the website. But I, I'm really kind of nervous about saying, okay, let's start this Laserfish project, and we haven't even finished up some other things, and
Are you, so, are you, could you call General Code?
I would, yeah, absolutely, I will.
And not only find out the stats, but find out what the money is.
I, I will, I absolutely, when I saw this.
Do you know?
No.
Bruce called the other day, and he sent you an email, you called him, he's from Gemco.
Yes, I've got his email.
Okay, I'm just letting you know.
But he's the one that brought this to my attention, and, but I had noticed when going to the bylaws that they were incomplete on this site. And, and I think, you know, we have to start with the bricks and mortar before we get to some of the other things.
So can you add to it, at least just placekeeping, until the next, can you add whatever number you're on, something to the bylaw revision and, bylaw and personal?
Bylaw review and
Bylaw review and
Codification of both of those.
Yeah, as long as you say bylaw, you say personal, right, so it will, you mean?
See, the chances are, you said that they had responded to Ann Gill. That's probably about the time that she left.
It is about time.
At least it was a bit, you know, it could have been worse.
And, and we hired a new town administrator, and it fell through the cracks, and
Well, what I will do before I leave will give a fairly comprehensive memo to yourselves and say, these are the things that are outstanding, and here are the intentions you need to pass for that.
And I, I think the bylaws, correct me if I'm wrong, are a very separate thing from the personnel policies.
That's a document.
Yeah, it's two separate objectives.
This should include the zoning bylaws as well, so I, I, we really need to focus on these, if you don't mind, before we get to the, some of the other things.
That'd be great. That's the kind of prioritization conversations that we need to have.
Yeah, because I said to Robin, there are things that we don't know, we don't know, that she may come across that are still open, that better to clean things up.
Yeah, I like to tie these things up, and then
Open Luke hands.
Exactly.
Plenty of words, plenty of words to gorgon.
Yeah. It would be on Board Docs for the first, what was it, like, three meetings ago, I mean, if you just do a search? Yeah, two or three meetings ago, it would be the attachment under the agenda item to review the objectives and goals and objectives, so.
In December, oh, it's
It wasn't the eighth, was it the eighth, it might be the one right before that.
Would have been before that, I think, because I missed it too, I, I
Can you search on Board Docs and type in?
You can search, yeah, you can just go and search in Board Docs.
Or technology.
It'll pop up.
Technology review, it'll pop up.
Okay, so
If you can, I'll take a read on it.
So 2020 goals and objectives will again be on our next session. Do we have minutes, or?
No minutes.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second, all in favor?
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Robin.
Yeah, thank you.
We're only here after week one, we'll get some good